Hi, Ben, just so you know, we're just viewing Kelly's. Is he there? Hello, Ben, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, just barely. Let me turn up my speakers.
I can tell sometimes one through.
There we go.
All right, not like guys say no. Don't say anything you don't want. A million watching around.
Okay, we can get, we can get started. Change a little to good afternoon instead of good evening. This is December third, twenty twenty four, work session of Academy Planning Board. This work session will come to order. This is a public proceeding. The public has the right to hear everything that is being said unless the board votes to enter into executive session per Names Freedom of Access Act. Public also has the right to review any of the materials created or received by the board that relates to the board's deliberation and the state law makes that document confidential. The following board constituents informed are present this evening. Don Tenny, Penny Carlin, and Tom Corbichetto, chair. Right. The agenda tonight includes reviewing the following items. Kit Auburn, fifteen C Street, map twenty-one, lot fifty-seven B. The applicant seeks permit to reposition and elevate the historic Nennett Shore Building. The resulting replacement structure will be a building being elevated by approximately seven feet with a maximum height of the structure going from approximately twenty-five feet to thirty-two feet, but with a slightly smaller building footprint and smaller decks. Our planning board procedure in work session will begin no later than five thirty unless the board votes to extend the time. Procedure for each application, the board will discuss the application. No action will be taken on taken on any application at this work session, either the applicant or the public has the right to speak. However, in its sole discretion, the board may ask questions of the applicant, solicit comments from the public. All persons addressing the board should first state their names. Okay, would you like me to give a little overview? I thought you did it greater.
You mean that?
You stop. Yeah.
Even or not, it's difficult to follow the application.
Well, if I may, um, go ahead. Someone will try to find the details. It could be an executive summary top of all of this. That would be really fun. Because, uh, you know, it mentions the seven foot elevation in the site plan. I have to put shoes there and go up. I insisted on the second site plan. Then I look down and down in the in the detailed little tiny boxes, it's only ever been so funny. That's how I figured it out.
You know, I wonder, I wonder on the building, there was some place I summarized that like, it may have been on the building permits, because I think I've seen on the site.
Issues on important.
Yeah. So that may be.
In the back.
It probably.
That works, I forgot last.
Um, but I'm happy to. Even the whole, you know, I didn't, I didn't bring.
First. And I brought up this topic.
Elevation. Oh, yeah, the old foundation, one hundred, um, that's on the last page. Oh, that's the, uh, so it's nine two sixty, yeah. Part of it is that it's designed again twenty-four by thirty-six. And we should rock it to do, you know, so it's.
But I, it's another first summer in ten.
Yep.
But just as clarification, Kenny Carlin, um, basically the change in height is based is because of the elevation of seven feet. It's not because the building itself is changing.
That's correct.
In, in itself.
Yes, and I'm happy to either now or later. Tim, who's on the sound, Kenison is our engineer for the project. And he's someone that's, um, you know, worked with the survey company and determined that we need to raise it six and a half to seven feet. That's, you know, the same, like, that's at least the raising. You could raise it more in theory, but, um, well, we don't. Or on the studio, I mean, this is. I mean, I, it's, does it make sense for Tim to talk it up like this, Ben? That's sure. I mean, when you think we can raise the fire and so forth, we're looking at a max of thirty-five feet. Sure, yes, yes, yeah.
Where the room.
Exactly. And we had your experience for us. I mean, Tim, would, would you just sort of articulate the requirement that we're meeting on? Can somebody ask, you know, what does that mean?
Yeah, yeah. So as far as I understand, what, what triggers that requirement is the fact that this building lands within a coastal V zone. So the coastal V zone requirement for buildings that are substantially improved means, which I believe is defined as fifty percent or more of the actual cash value in renovation or replacement cost, which we, you know, reasonably would be expected to trigger with this kind of project. Uh, if you are going to substantially improve that structure, it needs to become, uh, in compliance with the FEMA flood insurance rate map, V zone construction requirements. And that requirement for V zone structures is that a structure should be founded on an open foundation system with the bottom of the lowest horizontal structural member at one foot above the base flood elevation. And the base flood elevation for Castine is defined as thirteen feet, uh, North American Vertical Datum nineteen eighty-eight. Um, I think the existing elevation survey shows the door threshold elevation currently at, uh, I want to say it's at nine point two feet. And because of the timber frame structure, we have, um, a twelve, twelve by twelve main girder supporting a ten by ten, um, beam on the edge. So there's pretty substantial structure depth to get to the bottom of that lowest horizontal structural member. Um, that bottom of existing horizontal structural member has to be at that one foot above base flood elevation, which is fourteen feet. And that's where that elevation requirement of coming up seven feet comes from, is our current bottom of lowest horizontal member is roughly at elevation seven point two. So to be at fourteen feet or above, we'd have to come up six point eight to seven feet.
And, and those, those measurements are tidal based on tidal?
No, so the, so the base flood elevation is, um, that's defined as the, the height of the crest of a wave during a hundred year storm event.
Yeah.
And that elevation, that thirteen foot elevation is based on the North American Vertical Datum. It's not based on mean tides or, uh, highest astronomical tide. It's, it's a separate elevation marker. So it's, it's not necessarily tied to tidal elevations. It's tied to North American Vertical Datum. For, for example, uh, highest astronomical tide in Castine, I believe, is nine elevation nine point, or seven point two. So there is a, there is a difference between the crest of a hundred year storm event wave and your highest astronomical still water depth. And it is, it does get confusing when you're talking about tide elevations versus datum elevations, because land surveying uses dirt, the datum elevations where a lot of nautical elevations are based on, you know, mean highest high water or average tide line, uh, or mean lowest low water. Um, so those are, those elevation markers don't really get, uh, referenced. It's the North American Vertical Data that gets referenced. So that's why we have the survey, elevation survey reference to that datum, because the base flood elevation is measured to that datum as well.
It sounded like, you know, just as Kip speaking again, sounded like even as you articulated it, if the mean high tide elevation is about seven feet, they're saying the hundred year storm, even though it's a different methodology, is about seven feet above that. Is that? Is that the math that is close?
Yeah, so, so that, again, that base flood elevation is, is meant to be the crest of a wave during a hundred year storm event. And so there's a, a portion of that water elevation is the still water depth itself. But then there's added to that is storm surge. And as we can all attest to on, in the January storms, that, you know, that elevation was achieved during those storms where we saw, you know, especially this building, we saw what eighteen, twenty inches of water inside the, the structure. Um, so we did see still water elevation that was at eleven feet, North American Vertical Datum, um, which means that the crest of those waves was probably at thirteen foot elevation during a hundred year storm. Um, so it is meant to capture, and the intent of the elevation requirements for the FEMA firm is to get the structure, the horizontal members that support the structure up above the top of the crest of that wave during a storm event. So you're not receiving wave impact on the structure itself. And if you're elevated on an open foundation system, the open foundation system is designed for the lateral loads of water, uh, floodborne debris, wave impact, so on and so forth, but it keeps the structure above those wave impact forces, so that you're not designing the structure for lateral forces.
Just a stupid question. Um, in terms of those elevation, it's worth is zero.
Yeah, well, so zero, zero is based on, again, the North American Vertical Datum. There is a zero datum throughout the entire U S that land surveying uses. Um, so again, if we go to Dennett's, um, the, the threshold elevation on that survey, I believe, is nine point two feet. Um, there are some benchmarks in the pavement outside. I believe those are shown on a couple of spots on that elevation, uh, at eight, eight feet or eight point two. So zero would be nine point two down from the threshold uh, of the door or. The pins.
I think keep talking. Go ahead. So, um, so to sort of summarize within the project, we, uh, we obviously want to make the building more resilient and we're also required, as Tim said, like, we've got to lift it the amount, uh, from you know, the DEP would not allow us to make the alterations. Some of the other key components are, are designed is including granite fricking, which is a more resilient and durable support structure than, than pilings. Um, but it's nonetheless, as Tim alluded to, it's, it, it's also poor. So the, so the tidal water and so forth, uh, is dispersed through the crib because it's gaps. Um, and also in terms of the foundation, you see in the design, as you get closer to the road and where there's ground that's typically dry, although maybe the real high tide isn't, we would be building, uh, a cement foundation that stops at that, uh, high water tide and then building on top of that cement foundation, uh, cement or other pilings. So if there is a big storm or big event, it's still nonetheless passing over between the building and the foundation. That's, you know, I think, again, I think so.
Good, just to give the rest of board. And Sean mentioned, I had a conversation with me yesterday, uh, priving, we, we asked that we're in a priving uh, right up the street from, you see that new dock set up here.
Not a set.
Yeah, that's, that's the.
And, and Josh Conivor, I don't know if, you know, he's done a lot of work on the town dock. He is, uh, it was his or some part. But basically he was the one to suggest this, what we did at the modesty, and this is a very good. So. Anyway, so that's sort of the core of the foundation. In terms of the building objective is the we, uh, we wanted to make sure we're taking advantage of the waterfront, the buildings on the water. So one of the things we're trying to do in this design is have it hopefully be perhaps two, two businesses. So we've got the core restaurant, but can we have a bakery or coffee or other complimentary business or a little store that, that can provide provisions to people coming on boats so they could buy cheese or whatever. Um, so we can get, you know, a real more, as much use out of that building and people enjoying the experience of being on the water as possible. So in the design, sort of have a secondary space closer to the road that's meant to serve the second purpose, but still allow sort of access for people who want to get up on the deck. So, uh.
The question I had when Sean and I were talking yesterday is, well, you, you're raising it seven feet the entire day. On the D Street. We're talking entrance to the building will have steps.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So, uh, a couple of things interesting. So we'll have steps to get up and we'll also have a, a covered it will be covered, uh, ADM elevator, all so to speak, you know, lifts to get it up to, to, to the tree level. The other thing Charlie developed, you know, one of the things in the, in the restaurant, when it had that full deck, also have a porch in front. If you're in the restaurant, you actually didn't really feel like you're on the water. Part, part of the piece was you're looking across the deck even. And so that sort of makes it feel less like, so what we have done in the design, we've raised everything seven feet and the deck closest to the restaurant is raised seven feet. But then we, on the closest to the water side, there's actually another staircase that takes you down to an elevation similar to, uh, the existing. Um, that would be the, uh, the plastic chorus material similar to the town dock. So the water can come up into it. Um, if you look on this, is this the first page that we built?
It's not shown there. I was just, yeah, so in the large scale, but it's, it's basically at the bottom of the.
It shows it's here.
It's on the, the, where you can see the deck. It's in the blue area, the deck closest to the water. You can see a line going across. That's a lower deck.
Yeah.
Yes, out there.
That's lower.
The break between the lower deck.
That's, that's at the same level as it is now.
Yeah.
Except for less.
The staircase is up on the left, up on the top of it.
Yeah, there's there and there's a second.
There was one, it's not showing us. It was down below. It takes from the upper to the, on the side towards the, the, the other house, the, towards the town down.
Towards the town down. So there's another, there's an upstairs case.
Yeah. How would you, you know, um, achieve access to that for somebody whose handicap?
Yeah. That'd be a gray area at the, you know, you, you'd have the same experience at the upper level. As a matter of fact, we weren't even going to put tables down there at the, you know, based on the need.
Yeah.
That would just be a place for people to hang or, but I think the way the ADA needs is that he provide the same experience and literally you'd have the same experience seven feet, so.
The elevator on the C, C Street will often be very excellent.
Where is the lift?
Where, yeah, it's like a lift. You probably see, yeah, you go in and then you come out.
It's not shown.
That's, uh, that is shown. That's right in the, right as you come from each, because it's a, there's a box.
Of course.
And you're achieving the removing the non-compliance. Who do you, on instance?
Yeah, yeah. She's happy about, yeah, so you can see in the color one, that wing.
Yeah.
I guess there's a lot of history behind it and really, but that's, you know, it always is.
Not the only place.
The footprint is actually small.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is, which is. Is anybody?
Maybe there's a way of using the seasonal ramp as an access without lower.
So the area where. Yeah, it's, we get it. Well, it's a different thing. We'll, we'll look at it for sure.
But the seasonal ramp itself, I mean, we have that now. It's fifty feet and there's one entrance and one exit. So. And it's soon to the top. So I don't, I'm confused out specifically.
You're doing the fish ramping?
Yes, if you love, yeah.
You can't have that.
Be ready for the summer?
Yeah.
Gonna be ready for the summer?
So this is a good question. I should want to talk. So, uh, I mean, last year, it was a lot of stress, but I, I, I was highly confident we could get it up for like the restaurant of the last year. Um, but it was uncertain till the end. We're sort of facing that go and go decision more imminent than here. I know that, that Josh, who would be doing the pilings work is sort of ready to go if we get approval and everything. But we're going to have to make the call. Do we, do we delay the start until, you know, September? Or can we, can we get it up enough? And it, it's a long shot, but I'm, I'm not ready to give up on going for it. I mean, just like last summer, I'm sort of lining up the people and the family members to operate the restaurant. So people are going to start being committed. And that's where the pressure really, uh, increases. So there's, there's a chance we don't start it. There's a chance we start it and don't have anything for this. As if we started, don't finish, but maybe we got something. I can't imagine every piece, you know, maybe the storefront is, you know, boxed in, but not done, but it's, it's going to take a village.
Of course.
And some luck.
Goodness, when Ken Eaton gets busy, C Street is particularly traffic.
Yeah, I know. Well, a couple of things. I mean, one is you can see as Char, as Charlie designs, we have tried to increase the outdoor area. He shows two cars, but that doesn't, that could be bikes, that could be service fans or whatever. And then the other thing is there's a walk-in from that far side. That might be a laid out as well, so that we can sort of, you know, when the electrician shows up, farmer shows up. You know, hopefully we can accommodate more of that, that activity on site instead of tying up the parking lot or tying up the street. It's a key benefit of this thing.
A kitchen area is mostly where Ben?
Yeah, it's mostly where it was this year, which is alongside Kenny's in some street. The kitchen before that was sort of where those cars were and more on the roadside. And one of the reasons why last year we were sort of pushing it towards the water is just the efficiency of having it be a shorter walk from service to the people at the table. So it's always a problem with the restaurant. You cook at the roadside and then you're running all the way out to the deck. It's like thousands of steps and.
Sean mentioned something yesterday when we talked about kitchen in a box.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, I don't know if the other board members said.
So.
Ever heard of that?
And you mean, so, so we actually for this year, we just sort of got it in place from the end of the summer. And we tried to incorporate here, but it loses some efficiencies. Like, we, we bought a shipping container, had it outfitted with a hood and, you know, went through all the stuff for the, the items and it has a brake riddle pass through the window. And the only time we really got to using it finally was the end of the summer. And it's something that then they took away. Tim Bland brought it in on a crane and at the end of the season took it out. And we tried to incorporate that in this, but it sort of then would have been intruding on the side setback and, and it was, it was going to be more of an accommodation to the design and less efficient. So, you know, our, our plan is to sell it. Now, maybe back to your point earlier, for this summer, if we finish like the core infrastructure, maybe there's a, uh, an, a, a summer usage of that where we sort of tie that in again and then resume construction and building up the rest of the kitchen, that's all.
But it was. My family owned a lunch net for twenty-five, thirty years. And when I heard, I had never heard of a kitchen in a box. Right. And it was excellent because that's where the heavy damage.
Yeah.
To all the equipment, so.
Yeah.
For it to be taken away.
Yeah.
I thought it was excellent.
You have farming box off there too.
Farming, yeah.
There's a ton of.
Oh, that's right.
Is that really?
Right on the left inside, as you want to show her, there's a little farm in a box right there.
And we thought about it, it's not, again, the kitchen is the equivalent. That's why we put, we got a nice rail. We put it in there, a nice hood. But, yeah, I don't know if we can make that work. But we have thought about this walk-in of having like, well, that could be a removable component of a building. Problem is, it's got to be seven feet high. So it's not like we need to drive it up and leave it there. It's like you'd have to drive it up and jack it up and.
I mean, yeah, question. Now, where was it? Was it, was it where the?
Yeah.
Where the walk-in is?
Yeah, I mean, you can see it on the, on the, the image. As I said, that this is a two thousand eighteen image, the twenty twenty-four image is quite similar, but blurred.
Just slid into the side of the building. I think it's a great idea.
So that's all kitchen along, but.
Yeah.
Why opening there where the wait staff would go in and out?
Yeah. And the, the kitchen, that's the finishing, whatever riddle kitchen is the one closer to the water. And as you go to the left, it's more of a prep kitchen. And again, as we've sort of been turning over a lot of different what are supplemental uh, dining options like a breakfast or a brunch or bakery, you know, having a separate area where that could be prepping for, you know, the next breakfast while they're cooking the dinner and then in the service kitchen. That's the kind of.
Is the cold room you're using the, that sort of, the piece next to the car? To the door, it's somewhere.
That's dry storage, right?
Or the.
Oh, the walk, the walk-ins is the cold storage.
Walk-ins. You said you wouldn't have that. Is that an essential part?
Um, well, we'll need material refrigeration, but that could be, we could do something temporary for the summer. They do have for, you know, specifically with respect to cold space, they do have, you know, you can buy the cold space on a trailer and it can run on electric generator. So it, it, it it may be a pivot we need to make for this summer. So it 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 may be a pivot we need to make for this summer.
Now, is that um uh including on the setback so that it be a.
Yeah, so we're staying where within the footprint before, if you look at the two thousand eighteen, you know, we've had that attached.
Yeah.
Storage unit. It was only accessed from the outside before, now it would be accessed from the inside.
That'll be a grandfather piece of a.
Yeah.
And after the January storms, I ask, uh, so you had David Wyman down there to take a look at it, so he drew all this up, and I've got a placeholder in their map and lot file to show exactly what was there in the January storms, just for this eventuality, because I I expected that there would be something rebuilt there, and some portions of it are going to be non-conforming, because they were non-conforming ten years ago, and they were not conforming twenty years ago, and they're not conforming now.
And the other non-conforming, since we're putting all this on the table, is on the, you know, next to the Smith side. You know, we talked about, you know, giving back or relinquishing this deck, but that also is inside setback um between our property and the Smiths, but we are uh moving within this footprint of the old building, we are moving that one and a half story, the main historic work, a little more towards the center of the property. So uh even though it's going up seven feet, it's going a little bit, so it takes towards the center, towards eight, thirteen, about six feet or.
Yeah.
Whatever something like.
So this is the planning board's decision point is, it's much like the Zoller project, it's much like the Kulladar cheese, it's much like the uh the Widdens uh that, you know, it's an expansion of a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. Does the design meet? Move this property into conformity to the greatest practical extent? That's the way the ordinance reads, uh and what you all have to move on. By doing by doing a smaller footprint, right, that's also.
Exactly.
Right, also helping bring in. But you remember the Zoller property, I think they were right on the property line and they were moving their uh their garage a couple of feet back further off the property, Widdens was two two feet, seven inches off the property line, and they ended up at four, four feet, four inches uh along that property. Um it's not always gonna come into full conformity. That's why the ordinance is written the way it is, the greatest practical extent. Now, does it also help damage store or a storm? Is it, do we take any of that into? No. Not at all. I mean, it does for some. I mean, it it is, is it a consideration? Sure, it it comes into consideration, really, I've got a question for Tim whenever you have a a moment. Uh, you know, DEP is being fairly liberal with their uh approval of projects such as this right now, um because they know that a lot of these places got got destroyed. At the end of the day, URO's uh URO's ruling, the the board's ruling is is uh is subjective. And it's, you know, the greatest practical extent, and is it an extra inch, is it an extra two feet, is it full conformity? What they're showing you does not increase the non-conformity, and it does solve some non-conformities. There there were three before, if not more than that, and two of them are being solved. That has been by precedent, planning board has always proved that. Any board members have any question or Sean, you want to ask too? Hey, Tim, can you hear me?
Yep.
It's John Block. I just wanted to know, did you ever catch up with Tom Hurd or any of the uh DEP folks?
Yeah, so I've I've kind of been sent around the DEP ringer for the last couple of weeks, uh trying to get a straight answer from multiple people. Um I started with a contact that I've worked with in the past, Jordan Kelly, um who has done, he's one of their environmental specialists, he's he's uh responsible for reviewing a lot of per- by rule applications um with uh he's actually now down in in uh South Carolina, of all places, um but still works for the uh main DEP, he I guess he took a took a job in
Okay.
South Carolina, and then he's part-time assisting the main DEP um from.
I have Cameron Defore coming in, who's our reading DEP guy, I got him coming into town on.
Makes sense. Yep. Yeah, so so Kim, so yes, Jo- Jordan put me in touch with both Cameron Defore and, well, initially with Dawn Hurd, who then forwarded on to Cameron. So I I pressed him a little bit further on the requirements, and and really the the question that that we posed was there uh in kind of in the wake of the storms in January, the legislative passed uh LD twenty thirty, which was meant to, as you mentioned, Sean, kind of increase the um types of projects that could fall under a permit by rule application and and not require an individual term.
Yeah.
Typically, a project like this, pre-storm, would have, you know, pre that legislation, pre-storm, would have required an individual permit. You know, no, no, kind of no other options. They expanded the, the LD expanded the applicability of permit by rule to certain project types. So our question was, does this project fall within the intent of that permit by rule process with the LD twenty thirty? Um in the the language that that LD contains, it it all comes down really to definitions of a pier, dock, or wharf. And that's that's what I've been pressing in on DEP is to understand what is the definition of a pier, dock, or wharf? Because this, in my, in kind of my interpretation, is that this structure is a building structure, and the foundation of that building structure is an open foundation, currently on timber cribbing. Um.
Okay.
But they could view it as a pier, dock, or wharf, and a building or a structure built on top of a pier, dock, or wharf. Um that LD, as far as I am aware, does not apply to pier docks or wharfs. So one interpretation could say this building is built on a pier, dock, or wharf, therefore LD twenty thirty does not apply, will still needs to go through an individual process, process. Another interpretation could say that this is a structure on an open foundation, and you're elevating the structure within the footprint of the existing structure, and so it falls under elevating a structure under permit by rule. I, the the two processes are very different. Um as as Sean's aware, permit by rule is a fourteen-day review, very quick, the easy application put forward and interview. An individual nerve permit is more involved with uh, you know, notice of intent to file, notices go to abutters, it involves Department of Marine Resources, inland fisheries and wildlife, uh National Historic Registry. And so on, there's more departments involved, uh and can take anywhere from two to four months for review. So when Tip was mentioning earlier that uh we're kind of at that go no-go decision-making point, a lot of that decision rides on how the DEP is going to require this project to be permitted. If they require it to be an individual nerve permit, it it will push, it would push the project back. Um likely at the very least four months for for their review. Um if it's a permit by rule, that's something that can be turned around before the new year and construction could start very quickly thereafter, so that I've been pressing for an answer.
Is if I got Cameron coming in anyway, and he's a captive audience, uh let me shoot you that uh appointment over, and if you can make it in, um we can probably knock on this. Yeah. My DEP on, I was at certain thing.
Is it this Thursday?
Yeah, there's it, right? Yeah.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I'm I'm down in Augusta for the main transportation conference all day.
Okay, no worries, um I'll uh if if I can get him into town here and I'll run the plans through and see what he says and uh and inform you afterwards.
Yeah, the the latest, the latest email that I had from him uh was that he had he had proposed the plan to state flood zone coordinator, uh which I believe is Sue Baker. Um and then, as well as a licensing supervisor, who I reached out for a response earlier this week. Um his his response was, after communications with management, the height increase for the pier would be outside of what would be allowed under LD twenty thirty and would require an individual nerve permit.
All work.
Um so it's it sounds as though he's leaning towards that requiring an individual permit. My, I I guess my kind of rebuttal or my question is, what is defining this as a pier? Like, is it a pier, dock, or wharf, or is this a building foundation? And that's that's where the semantics, I guess, becomes important. Um and and I I looked all through their PBR regulations and I can't find an actual definition for a pier, dock, or wharf. Um so it it makes it a little clear, a little unclear what that LD applies to if they don't clearly define a pier, dock, or wharf. So I did follow up with Sue Baker, who's the the floodplain coordinator, uh she's kind of outside of DEP, she she deals more with the um NF NFIP regulations, so I don't think she's gonna help necessarily on what DEP permit is required, but um you know, she'll be, she'll be aware of what elevation requirements are.
There's an old state laws, probably a state definitions, but it's helpful, there's the Wharves and Mears Act. If you're familiar.
Yeah. Permit.
Eighteen forty-something, I think. Uh that probably had the definition that might be useful, at least they'll get get you some.
Yeah.
And I can find that act, we had to uh go through that for the M and A year permit.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 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 ancient.
Yeah, it sounds like it. I've heard, I've heard the term, I don't know if I've ever actually read it.
Yeah, I had to look up what a weir was.
Well, if you, I mean, any, you know, being a layperson, knowing about the law, it's frustrating to hear that there's ambiguity, because it's existed, we're making more resilient, big and high, like, what is the law doing if not like responding to this? So any logic, common sense?
You know, it sounds to me like I could be like screaming at the windowstopful on the chairman on Thursday, because uh he's he's already sent it up the food chain and, you know, given his recommendation, but I I don't think it's a it's a righteous project. It doesn't need, uh, I don't, you don't need a submerged land lease or any tinkering with that with the uh with your personal space. Because I'm grabbing. Okay, I didn't think so. I wouldn't have thought so either, I just agree, so maybe I could make some headway with him on that. So. For us to deal with. Nothing, that's just a contingency of approval that the planning board would do. There's there's several conditions of approval that you guys will need to put on this, should you choose to approve the project. You know, one would be that the plan is gonna have to go through state fire marshal review uh for plans review, because you're elevating the structure, which means that you are tinkering with the egress of uh from the fire perspective, so that'll be a condition of approval. Second would be, can't move forward without DEP approval. Because, yeah, the twenty thirty allows for four feet, but, you know, the definition is this building is the pier, et cetera, et cetera, so that would be the second thing. URO's decision point is, does this come into local zoning compliance to the greatest practical extent? And then the conditions would be outside that, because that's on my, on me to make sure that the applicant submits that paperwork before they before they start building. Does the board see anything different from our ordinance of closing? I mean, that footprint to me was when I first looked down to it, I said, by bringing the footprint in, it's helping, it's actually helping our decision. Uh, two states. We're not looking at any other things that we have to change or address or something. I felt the DEP. Bless you. No. So, so I mean, it's a real situation, but that's that's from our point of view, ordinance-wise. I must say, that's really gonna impact this project. What you're doing that. I think, no, even more.
I like it.
I think it's gonna enhance our work. It's that's basically.
Isn't there an apartment that Paul had, and does that mean removed?
Oh, I love it. He he, I don't know if you call it apartment, he actually, he lived upstairs at one point, and then he had some sort of, in some very condition, so then he lived downstairs, sort of where the bathrooms are for a while. Um but for the past number of years, that's been storage and office and computer space, no one's lived up there, they've got a plan to do that in here, you know. Down the road, would we ever have somebody live there? We, if we if we were to go down that route, we'd have to come and change the permitting or something, so there's no, we don't have any intention or plan. It's just a, it it is a space, and it's, it's sort of Sean, uh you were talking about. It's not, I mean, it's not really a two-story building, it's sort of a one and a half story building, so that upstairs space that we're talking about, like, it's got eaves and if you stand in the center, you're fine, but.
With the no dollar bills stuck upon it.
No dollar bills stuck in that in that space.
But, you know, you can see those decks.
Yeah.
Treated stairway and so.
Yeah, and that that outside, and I, it's so funny, I don't know if if that was egress at one point, or if that was to access, like, there are different uh you know, units on the roof, like, related to the cooling system or heat pump. And so I don't know what the historical purpose was on those, but they, you know, we did use them when we accessed the heat pump.
And I just thought of the third bit, not just thought of it, just failed to mention it, but uh you know, you'll need DEP before you can start, you'll need the uh uh fire marshal review before we can start, but then the third thing is, is that once the foundation goes down and Tim's ready, we'll need a floodproof or a floodplain certificate uh filed again, outside of URO's purview, but it's something that I have to get. Normally, I work with your engineer, and it's just getting a PE stamp on on the foundation design to make sure that it meets that once you do it, uh storm eventually. So uh we've got the same thing going on in current, three or four, now more properties going down Water Street, it's not, it's not a big deal, and a PE stamp on that is as good as gold. So.
So that's your intent, will you tell Tim and Tim knows what you guys do, whatever you need.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's basically just a cert, it's a, there's a standard form certification that verifies that you have met the one foot above base flood elevation for the minimum, the lowest horizontal member, um very straightforward thing to do. Um.
Parking.
One more thing I'll I'll probably add to that, Sean, is that I believe we would also need the Department of Marine, Department of Marine Resources approval of timing form, um because of the proposed activities in the water. So if there's, you know, place placement of granite cribbing, uh I believe DMR needs an approval of the activity timing form completed. Um which again is not a, it's not a difficult thing to obtain, it's just an application stating when you plan to do the work and what measures will be taken to prevent sedimentation of the water.
Can we approve the project contingency? Yeah, you need to put those conditions of approval on there. Because that tasks me, creates a paper trail to task me as CEO to ensure that Tim's getting me the paperwork, then he, that these guys are getting me the paperwork they need, and it all comes from packaging map and lot file.
Kit, when you raise this, are you gonna insulate?
Good question. Uh our base, my baseline has been, we won't, and the reason being, I mean, on one hand, it'd be nice to have more year round, but starting in the bottom on the way up, I mean, when it got. Starting in the bottom on the way up, I mean, when it got hit by the storms. You know, we had to demo, you know, thirty-six inches all around the perimeter of the building, rip out the insulation, air it out. You know, because it's sort of mold risk and, you know, we're going up higher. There were times when like certain plumbing things might have been insulated down below. But to insulate that floor over the water, I don't know, it's just. My presumption is keep the air flowing, mitigate mold risk. But on the flip side, we do, we would like to be able to extend the. The season. So it's challenging. I don't know, you know, Charlie, please, please comment.
Well, it's also like, what would you insulate with? And thing that sort of makes most sense is foam, but that's buoyant. And even though this is something some time, but what if you get the hundred, the two hundred. I mean, that's what I think the building floated for, basically. That's what wrecked it. It would have floated and moved a little bit. So there's that little piece of it. I don't hate to do it, you know, it'd be a great thing to insulate, but. Feels like that might be.
It it still does have some insulation applied and I will say, uh. Over the course of the hot days and the cool days, like it was, I was surprised at how temperate it was. Um, so you could still, I think you, I still think you still could extend it and you could still, you know, use the heat pumps to take the edge off, but you know, you gotta. Sometimes this really is pretty cold. And that's insulated or not, but you know, so. You know, that might. Do what you got. One of the other thoughts was like, oh, maybe this little store piece. You know, you could in insulate some other little piece. So even if, let's say the core lotion side restaurant is not. Maybe there's a subcomponent that's in a bar or turn the year around and and people would still access decks and so forth. So. It's a good question.
And you still have your heat pumps.
We have one operating heat pump. But I think, and maybe we ran that sort of in the kitchen, but uh again, all summer. Temperature was close enough to comfortable. And again, in September for the people.
Probably your season really is controlled by.
Yeah, it is. But again, if we can have this compartmentalized little other store and have someone, you know, we, we'd like to extend it because, you know. Financially, this is not really a good decision. You got a restaurant that's open two or three months. Subject to, you know, so um. Anything we can do to get more usage during those three months or to make it longer than three months. Helps to take the the sting out of it. You're gonna talk to Alan, you're gonna prove it, I'm doing. We had a couple of people. They have the uh Mary, it looks like tonight we just slept. And then the other two people, yeah, Susan is my sister. She probably knows what's going on. She is just like, and Mary, I did. Just last Friday maybe or over the weekend, I did send her not the whole package, which I'll be happy to do. I think she's, she's entitled to receiving it. Whatever. But I did share with her the plan that chose existing versus proposed. As well as with this. Uh, and she said. Mary said she was gonna sleep.
I was just curious if they had input. The person we have meeting on in smart. David was. Don. I saw the friends of Stalin.
There won't be, yeah, it's gonna be these granite strips. And it's, they're gonna say, what are they called? Blueys? It's a blue is. It's a little bouncy. Yeah, I I think one of the important. Uh, showing an elevation of the building relative to neighboring buildings. Yeah, if they move behind you, uh. I think I also. Pretty too smaller. So yeah, one of the things getting into the weeds a little bit, but in terms of being able to uh efficiently operate the restaurant. And where the entrance was, it seemed.
Yeah.
Positioning those bathrooms where there's that walkway now, where from the Smith's perspective. It's sort of just a blank wall anyway. It's sort of tucks it out of the way. Anyway, yeah, we have a lot of problems that that's.
I think the only other question I'm having is that.
No.
I have any issue? But uh, there's another level. Exposed. It was before. Yeah. So what happens between there?
Yeah.
And gray.
Yeah.
Around the building isn't screens and so on. You know, shingle.
Gotta be open. It's gotta be open. I can do like a low metal, yes, something to take the edge off visually, but certainly in the off. We want the water to go through. It's wood, it's becomes projectile.
Yeah, there there are, there are provisions for allowing breakaway walls below grade. So they they have some definitions for what that entails, but it's, it's essentially like lattice, you know. Like a lattice framework or a screening that would be not restricting the flow of water. So there are, there are ways that you can visually treat the underside of that structure without uh providing an impedance to the flow of water.
Well, you're right.
Well, that's why you see, you see the bottom of one.
From the roadside, you've got the stairs and the left and so.
Anything, anything else? No, Teddy, no, Tom, Beth, anything else?
Exciting music. Thank you. So you're available ten AM on the. Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, sorry, I didn't catch, I didn't catch you were talking to me there. Um. Eleventh, okay. Yeah, if you could, shoot, shoot me an email. I will take a look at my calendar.
All right, thanks.